All right, let's call the City and Marine City Commission meeting to order. Can we please have a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Burkhart.
Here.
City Manager Lott.
Here.
All right, moving on to communications. I need a motion to receive and file. City Commission meeting, cancellation notice, January 3, 2019. Planning Commission minutes, October 8, 2018. The Zoning Board of Appeals minutes, November 7, 2018. Tifa minutes, November 20. Department and Activity Reports and the Marine City Area Run Report and the Friends of City Hall Letter. So moved.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on the communications? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Roland Walker. I'm at 519 South Elizabeth Street, 35-year-plus resident of Marine City. I'm here tonight to talk about, reiterate what I talked about at the last meeting, about the opt-out option for cities and municipalities to take on the marijuana legislation, or the marijuana law, excuse me, that was passed. I'm here for a simple reason. It's really about our community and the kids. I retired chief of police from Shelby Township, conservative community, business-oriented, a community that's very progressive in a lot of ways, believes in the people's right to speak on issues. Our chief presented to the board and they voted unanimously seven to zero to do the opt-out. Communities all around the state, southeastern Michigan, are opting out for a lot of reasons. I don't have time to go through all of those, but I think it's really important that you move quickly on that. I think by delaying that, you're sending a message to business people, people outside of our area that are thinking, maybe Marine City's open for business. Maybe we need to come into the community and solicit, you know, people possibly opening up wholesale retail business in Marine City. I think that'd be a very, very serious mistake. I think you need to move quickly on that and send a message that Marine City's not open for business. Our community is being known for antiques and theaters and the waterfront, freighter watching, and the beach, and all those things that attracted me to this community 35 years ago. I commuted for 26 years back and forth to Shelby Township because I wanted to be in a community that has a low level of crime, that's a beautiful place to be, and has a reputation, a good community. It's really important that we need to protect that, and I think we need to take quick action on opt-out ordinance. I've been in law enforcement for 40 years. I've worked as a narcotic detective for three years. I was a dare officer, a school resource officer, and retired as a chief of police. I have a lot of people in the law enforcement community. It's unanimous, from the sheriff all the way down to the community police chiefs in McComan County is, we don't want to see that in our community. It brings in all kinds of issues and problems. If you have marijuana wholesale and retail in your community and most everybody else doesn't have it, what do you think they're going to be doing? They're going to be driving to Marine City, our community, to purchase an intoxicant while they're driving. They're going to use it coming, they're going to use it while they're here, and they're going to also use it when they're leaving our city. Colorado and Washington have had an increase in OUID, drunk driving, intoxicated driving, since they passed that, so you're putting your residents at risk by doing that. Also, they're having a problem with edibles, and unfortunately, they decided in their wisdom to include that in the wall so that you can have brownies and cookies and all these kinds of things that little kids and kids gets their hands on, and all those kinds of issues. I think it's really important that you take a hard look at what's going on here and make sure that you move quickly, and I'd really be pleased to see you do that. And I really appreciate the time. And I'm heading south because my mom is 90 years old and she lives down south and she wants her son down there for a month or so. And I have two grandchildren in the great state of Florida, so I'll be gone for about six weeks or two months, but I'll be keeping an eye on what's going on, and hopefully you'll have that all completed and done when I get back, and I'll know that we have a safe community and that we're standing up for the kids in our community, and we're going to keep an intoxicant out of our community. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Anyone else like to speak?
Mike Hillfrank, 525 Woodward Street. So tonight, you guys will be considering the new appointee for the commission. I believe I'm on that list. I would just like to say that, you know, if I have your vote, I really appreciate it. If I don't, it's all part of the process. That's okay. No hard feelings whatsoever. And I just want to thank you for your time and consideration. That's it. Thanks.
Rosalie. Oh.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ben Heath. I live at 545 North Main Street. I've also thrown my name into the hat for the open commission seat. Wanted to take a quick second to introduce myself. My family and I, my two kids and my wife, we moved to Marine City about a year ago, September. Prior to that, I've got a bachelor science degree from the University of Iowa. Professionally, I am a business management consultant. Worked with large corporations in corporate crisis management, helping them design business processes that can endure things like hurricanes and cyber attacks. Want to be a part of the city. Love this place for a long time, like the direction it's going. Want to keep it heading that direction. Friendly business environment, bringing more families from outside the town into the town. May I look forward to working with you guys? Appreciate your vote.
Rosalie, did you want to speak?
Rosalie Squires, 211 Michigan. I'm the longest resident of Mariner's Landing condos. Just a couple of things. I want to first start by saying, if anybody has plans to see it, make sure you see Mary Poppins. I saw it at opening day here in Marine City, and it's really, really awesome. I loved the original when I was nine years old, and this one did not disappoint. I saw two good movies at our little theater here. The Grinch was great. I saw it on Monday, and that was the longest movie they ever had. It played six weeks in his 10 years of having that theater. And he's got Mary Poppins for three weeks, so it's really a cool movie. Okay, fast forward here. This is a gift I just want to give the fire department. It's just an ornament of a fire truck for your tree.
Thank you very much.
And I'm just giving you this as a thank you, as an old newsboy. I know you share this space with us, and we make, cause you a lot of inconvenience, and you're very cooperative, and I want to thank the firemen for their cooperation, helping us old newsboys. I want to thank three groups of people that helped us a lot as old newsboys. One is Anita's Place, gave us a fundraiser. We could, this past, well, week ago, Wednesday on the 15th, and they were very accommodating. We enjoyed good pizza and had a lot of fun. Also, the Hells Our Home gave us a fundraiser, and they brought us some cash money and a lot of toys, and they had a big fundraiser for us, and that was very helpful. And also, Gars had a bunch of alumni come in, that's waitresses that used to work there, and they waitressed for a charge. They took all their tips and donated them, and also had a big raffle, and then percentage of the, there was a cover charge to get into Anita's, and also there was a percentage of, I think it's 10% of whatever food was bought, got given to three different groups, and the old newsboys was one of them. So I really want to thank those three organizations. And anyone that has helped us put things on the mitten tree, given toys, attended our fundraisers, attended our craft show, I appreciate it. You know, each child gets about $100 in that box, and we have 300 kids to buy for, so it does cost a lot of money. And these kids really need it, and I really appreciate you helping our community. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to speak? No?
My name is Mel Dins, and I live at 435 South Main. And I came up to agree with the sheriff or chief of police about the dope. Like I mentioned last meeting, I see more than this place could carry. I was given a vacation and a golden triangle, and this stuff that don't bother you is a bunch of crap. I seen it in real life. Because if it didn't bother you, you wouldn't have them. But I think it's great you're going to collect taxes and fix the roads. Maybe that's why they call it potholes. There's a good reason why they call that stuff dope. If you pass it, you're going to join the crowd. We heard rumors last week about everybody jumping on the bandwagon. The Voice declared, "Two towns already told them to get out." But that wasn't why I stopped. I was hoping you're going to do something with your parking van. Like I said, if you use common sense with it, it would come and work out all right. Years ago, you liked the man who talked about coming here because he liked it. Years ago, these people would talk to you. Like I said, when I parked on the lawn 20 years ago, the city manager come out to talk about it and said, "Well, you're not on the grass, or you're not on the street, and you're not parking the sidewalk. It's your property." But the point is, and the man mentioned about bringing more people, you don't have any parking spaces. What are you going to do with them? Like you told the woman last week, one visitor passed. Which kid or you want to come visit you, if they're coming from out of town or a long way? I don't understand why you can't use a little common sense when you come up with this crap. Now, if you think about it, and if somebody's there, go talk to them. Ask them why it's there, not issue them a summons and threaten them. You got to make do with what you got to do. We had four cars smashed in front of my house parked in the street, and there wasn't snow at the time. I wouldn't park my car on Main Street to save your life. Now, granted, you, my neighbor parks, and there's, she's never been hit. So it's an act of God. But if you look at the bottom of my driveway where the dirt and rocks are at, you see the skid marks where the car skid to a stop before they hit her. It's just, I'm going closer. Where you go to parking and no parking. I almost got hit head-on coming here today because somebody wouldn't get over, and there was parked cars on Main. And Main Street is like a drag strip. Did you know you can go down Main Street and come out somewhere around Bowery and Alger and beat all the traffic lights by about a minute and a half? And people do it in the morning and at night. Because I followed them. I couldn't figure out where the fire was, and everybody went zipping by the house. They get a rolling stop on Alger or Bowery and keep right on going down 29. That's a lot better than stopping for the lights going around the curves. And there's a lot of school buses on Main that weren't there years ago. And like the man said, he enjoys the town. That's why he moved here. That's the same reason I came 40 years ago. But in the same token, this ain't the same town it was 40 years ago. Because people that come now left something, but now we want to make it to what we left. If it was so good when you left, why did you leave? I want this to be like Royal Oak. I want it to be like Rochester. This isn't Rochester. I don't care how much money and dope you sell here. You couldn't sell enough dope to tell people this is Rochester. But you don't want Rochester. If you did, you would have lived there. So use common sense. I realize you can't legislate it. It's not your problem. But think about it. You could tell the man before you come and kick the door and threaten somebody about a car on the lawn, or to come up and tell me, "You can clean your garage out." Lady, I could tell you something that's physically impossible. Talk to the people. That's what they did 40 years ago. When I had a problem, I called Jack Kelly. He'd come over to the house to see what it was. Now, it's a four-day work week. You got a problem? It'd be till Monday. I don't understand it. No common sense. You pass any more of this crap, I hope you at least think about it before you do it.
Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we're going to move on to approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any questions or concerns on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Moving on to approval of the minutes from the City Commission regular meeting, December 6, 2018.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 6 meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion support. Any corrections or deletions?
I want to bring it up to the board. I made an amendment. I found at the very end, the adjournment time was incorrect, and I noticed that today, but I did correct that. It was at 9:04 instead of 7:39.
We wish.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Oh, we have none. So that's even better. Moving on to unfinished business, we've got the City Commission appointment. Before we do that, I would like to read off who has put in their name to the hat for the, we've had one that's been removed out of the packet. Chuck Signarini has removed his name from consideration. We have Mike Hillfrank at 525 Woodward. We also have Paul Merchant at 216 North Market. Benjamin Heath, 545 North Main Street. And Brian Ross at 433 North Main Street. Can I get a motion to nominate the first person, please?
Mayor, I make a motion that we nominate and appoint Paul Merchant to the vacant City Commission seat.
Support.
Motion support. We didn't hear from him, though, did we? You both kind of quiet. Anybody have any questions or concerns about Mr. Merchant? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Burkhart.
Yes.
Mayor Van Bosh.
Yes. Yeah, congratulations. All right, now we need to move on to board appointments. And bear with me, because I got to do this right. Zoning Board of Appeals will be the first one. We talked about it, but then we have a pretty small packet, and we didn't make an extra packet for them. It's up to the board. Would the board like to seat them yet? No? Per attorney? He's shaking his head, so.
You can appoint them to all the boards, but you can't, he can't be seated.
Okay. We'll seat them that second, third week of January, then.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
All right, so back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have James Turner at 361 North Main and James McDonald at 339 Woodward. And that one, we just need a nomination for the first appointment. And then, I need them both, but I got to have one as an appointed and one as the alternate. So I need somebody to make a motion to do one or the other.
Okay. You need a nomination?
I need one of the two to be nominated.
Okay.
I need them both, but.
One at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we nominate James Turner to, as the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on it? And that's a, that's not a roll call on that one, is it?
Nope, we're not going to do roll call on these.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Moving on to appointment of James McDonald.
I'll make a motion to appoint James McDonald as the alternate. Support.
Motion support. Any questions on James? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Moving on to the Board of Review. Can I get a nomination for Robert Beatty?
Make a motion to nominate Robert Beatty to the Board of Review.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
These next ones are actually easy. I like these ones. Can I get a motion to approve Kim Turner for Historical Commission?
Make a motion to nominate Kim Turner to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Any questions or concerns on Kim? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. Moving on to the Tifa Board. In that one, I have to appoint, can I appoint James McDonald to the Tifa Board?
Do we make a motion?
It says appointment by mayor with city's approval.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Next, I'd like to appoint Robert Weisenbaugh for the second appointment for Tifa Board.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on Robert Weisenbaugh? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Carried. No pension board. Application received. Planning Commission, I need to appoint Trent Attenberry. What? Oh.
I think it's up here.
Oh. Trent Attenberry for Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, down to Dangerous Building, Dangerous Building Board of Appeals. Now, we need two citizens, one building contractor, and one registered state architect. Are any of these? So which one am I?
One of them is a, John Pollan. I'm not sure if he's an architect or an engineer, but the other two are citizens.
So we have the two citizens, and then one would be either a builder or registered?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have too many of?
He's a reappointment. The two of them are here, reappointments, but yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do we have to do these separate?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Can I please get a nomin, is this one? This one's appointed by the City Commission. Can I get a nomination for Trent Attenberry?
I'll make a motion for Trent Attenberry as a citizen for the Dangerous Building. Support.
Motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
And then moving on to John.
Pollan?
Pollan?
Pollan.
Can I get a motion for John Pollan?
I'll make a motion for John Pollan, who's reapplying.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then moving on to Graham Allen.
I'll make a motion for Graham Allen.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, there was one on the, there was something on the, never mind. That was on my notes.
Could you put a call out for Historical Commission? We need someone for Historical Commission.
We are looking for someone for, how many for the Historical Commission?
One.
One more person for the Historical Commission, and then we need one for the pension.
A citizen in large, yes.
We do need a citizen in large. Do they put an application in for that one, just as they do?
Yes.
Okay. If someone could please put an application in for the Pension Board. It's an important board to help make decisions on how Pension Board is managed, so. And is Mr. Shields stepping down, or? Okay. And he's done it a long time. He's done a great job, so. Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Yes, he has.
All right, moving on to parking permit request.
As most of you probably recall, the Commission had been working on revamping the snow parking permit ordinance for a number of months, and we identified some issues and things that we wanted to change in the ordinance that we had at the time, so we went through and did that. Our office has been administrating the ordinance as written, which was very particular. It was, I would say, a little less vague than what we had prior to our revised ordinance. Taking that into consideration, what we look at is garage space and driveway space that someone could park a vehicle on. For issuing permits, we actually have the code enforcement building official go out to the property, take a look at the vehicles that they have, the space that they have, and see if it's able to accommodate the space that they have. It's all about, in essence, living within your means. The ordinance does have a provision in it whereby if someone feels that the official has made a bad decision, they have an opportunity to come before the board to appeal that decision. I would just ask that if you do find some particular thing that is a reason why we might need to give a variance tonight, that we might actually want to consider changing the ordinance as opposed to giving a variance. I did contact the person for this variance. Unfortunately, she did not call me back. As far as the snow parking permits and everything, I know I've had some conversations with some of you. St. Clair recently has decided to pull the plug on their snow parking permit ordinances, and they're just going to a snow emergency ordinance. I've talked with several of you about potentially seeing how things go with them and maybe changing things again next year. There are a couple other people that have had circumstances where they were planning on doing something, and I did let them know that we would be willing to help bridge a year for them and give them permits. I would have liked to have talked to Nikki, but as I said, she didn't call me back. I'm not sure if she's here tonight, and would like to speak on behalf of that, but that's pretty much where we're at and why this is before you tonight.
Is she here?
I believe so. I'm going to call Man's End, I live at 661 West Minister. My application was denied. My 17-year-old daughter went up to apply for the parking permit because we have a two-car driveway. We do have a garage. Our garage is solely used for storage. We do not have an attic. We do not have a basement. So everything is in bins in our garage, so we're unable to use our garage as parking. Even if we were to able to store all of our unable to use our garage as parking. Even if we were to able to store all of our storable belongings in another location, there are built-in shelves that prevent a car to be pulled into our garage. So, we were just trying to be responsible citizens. We're not living above our means. She owns a fifteen-year-old car, so she just wants to be able to park in the street and I'm not going to park in the street and my husband's not going to park in the street because our cars are much nicer, so.
I did have a conversation with Susan earlier today about this. She did explain to me that the side where the garage is is considered the backyard and there's no prohibitions to parking in the backyard. I think in the past when she had been communicating with Ms. Hints, that there was parking in the easement, which I understand to be between the sidewalk and the curb. However, she feels that there is space that she could park next to the driveway.
No.
It was a consideration.
Oh, we were parking there last year. We did have a third car for a very brief moment. We were parking there and we received a second notice to not park there.
You're talking about between the sidewalk and the curb or?
No, be, between our house and the driveway. There is a very small patch of grass and we were told that it would cause property damage. I own my home. I pay my, my taxes on time, so in five years we've owned our home, we've done numerous improvements to the home, so we're not going to deliberately damage our home. So, that was thrown out last year when we received a notice.
They're saying you can't park in that small section of grass then?
Correct.
But you're saying, Susan said, is now saying that?
Right, when, when I spoke with her just this evening, that was something that she had mentioned, was that that is an area where she would be able to park as that's, in essence, the backyard. It's just she can't park between the sidewalk and the curb because that's the easement and we, I think we've had, we've had conversations.
Right.
At great length at previous meetings about the easements.
But I can't see why we prohibit her from parking right next to her driveway. Would that satisfy?
We'll do what needs to be done.
Yeah, but would that be a sat, would that be a satisfactory result? Would that make you happy?
If you were allowed to park in the grass where they told you you couldn't, would that solve it?
As long as I don't receive any citations or notices in the mail.
No.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Alright.
If, if we're all good?
I think that's our resolution.
Okay.
You're good.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Moving on to River Rec Teen Zone, the waiving of the permanent fees for renovations they're making to the bathroom area and the garage.
I'll make a motion that we waive the permit fees for the River Rec Teen Zone.
Second.
Any questions or concerns on it?
Nope, just glad to see it's moving forward.
Yeah, they were working on, they were pouring today, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And moving on to, uh, Mike. Water, uh, water plant pump. Why say that one easy?
High service pump. We, uh, you were back in June, I sent you a memo about the pump failing and we finally found the, uh, um, curb pump, which would be the best suited pump for us to be put in there. We're gonna do the work ourselves to taking the other pump out and save us about nine thousand dollars and just asked them to be able to buy the pump and get this project going.
Refresh me, what kind of pump was this one again?
This is for the high service.
Huh?
This is a high service pump.
Oh, high service, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Now, we're not, are we?
We worked with Tetra Tech on getting bids for this.
Okay.
So, you wouldn't necessarily need to waive the competitive bidding. It wasn't something that we did. They were the ones that prepared the bids for us.
Can I get a motion to approve, uh, the upgrades to the pump?
I'll make a motion to approve the curb pump bid of twenty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars.
Support.
Motion support. Any more questions on it? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call, vote please. That's why it says roll call.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner McCann?
Yes.
Neil Vanabash?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to the DEQ Water System Survey, because we had some questions last night.
Yeah, we've got Ken with Tetra Tech here as well to field any questions other than, I mean, if Mike can handle it.
I'm handling it.
Can Mike, why do we?
Two of them, I think they should be able to hopefully answer any questions.
Why do we have deficiencies for treatment and distribution?
Well, the treatment and distribution, the treatment, they gave us a deficiency because of the fact we only had three filters. The plant was built with three filters and the new state law says you have to have four. So, that's a deficiency. Right now, where our own goes in for, um, the mixture for to take the pretty other water, they require a mixer in there. We've never had one. We've never been in violation. They gave us the deficiency for that. Okay?
And that's under the distribution?
No, that's in the water plant. That's something the city, we, city takes care of.
Alright, but we also deficient under the distribution system.
The distribution system, um, which part?
Well, it just says distribution system deficiency, so.
If you go to my response on page two. Part of ours was that we did not have our water mains located or sized, which we did. You all have a copy of every single main we have in town, size and age. We have a current map of hydrants, which the fire department has a map and we have a map of every hydrant, GPS, and what the flow rates are.
Right.
We do, we do have all this stuff, but for some reason, don't know why he gave us deficiencies on that. We do have.
Mike, was, was that not because they were looking for a more, I guess, high-tech, professional version of the mapping? And that's something that, out of the SAW grant, we were looking at software for mapping, which costs thousands of dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And we were, in essence, doing it in-house. You know, this is for us and, and staff and everyone to be able to know everything and, and where the locations are and the deficiencies, but for the state, I guess that is not good enough and they, in essence, want us to have a professional map done.
Right.
Using professional mapping software. So, that's part of the reason for the deficiency there.
And, uh, number four on page two also, the same thing there. We don't expect no growth. We've been at the same amount of water every month for, for every year for the last couple of years. And, uh, we don't feel we need a hydraulic study done of our system, which is going to cost us thousands of dollars and that's why we're probably applying for a waiver so we don't have to have this done.
Okay.
Okay? High service pump, everybody's aware of that. Filtration, um, our capacity is the same thing. We're just explaining about the, we, we put out three hundred thousand gallons a day. Our plant is capable of doing one point four. We are completely capable of growth and extension of our mains. Uh, the filter walls, um, they were in the budget this year to be painted. You know, we build the filters and paint the filter walls down there. So, it's right in the budget for this year.
Okay.
The intake was inspected this year over the summer. I was just, um, plant paper.
We're, we're still waiting for that report to come back, right?
Yep.
Okay.
We should have it within a couple of days.
And then that'll be forwarded to the state when we get it.
Yep.
That was when you used the divers?
Yes. The reservoir condition, yeah, we have not been in there in...
Ten years?
So, yes, we're gonna get in there this summer and inspect it and find out what's going on. If there's any problems down there or not. Okay? Uh, plant piping, we, plant paint or plant piping? Okay, we had, we did start painting down there, but he would like to see us put arrows on which directions everything's going. So, we, that's what we're doing now. Putting arrows on which way the flow is going in the plant. So, anybody can walk down there and see which way the water flows. Flooding, um, we have two inch and a half sub pumps down there right now. We have alarms in the, in the sub pump poles. We have alarms on the floor. Uh, the plant is built with check valves on the outside of the plant and from the, uh, uh, selling basins back to the plant, there's check valves. So, if anything happened in that plant when the plant was not staffed, there's no water getting in there coming back in there. You might get maybe a foot of water in there, but those inch and a half sub pumps should take care of it. And we do have a three-inch pump down there that we plan on putting in. The treatment monitoring for the concrete, it's something that we, we're gonna put in the asset management plan sometime. Have somebody take a look at it, the whole plant. Treatment monitoring. We do fluoride as a volunteer. We can stop anytime we want. We don't have to put fluoride in. So, we did do the recommended dose and raise it to seven, but it's a, it's a volunteer thing. We stopped it for a few years, just to save some money. Then people wanted back here, we started putting it back in. On page four, the, put my glasses back on. Somehow, over the last couple of years, we log, with everybody's new coming in, um, we lost the forms to do our uncannibal water, which leaves the plant in what we kept, we, we taking and building. So, now we have new forms set up, new process. Uh, monthly, the water plant ships to me and to the building clerk how much water they put out. And then we can compare to how, how much water we bill for. Like, right now, we're at eleven percent loss, which is fantastic.
How much?
Eleven percent. Most cities range from fifteen to twenty-five. So, we're at eleven percent. The second bullet point on that is the underside mains. You know, we, everybody knows we have them. And the same thing as the valves. You guys got my reports on valves. We're very limited on valves inherent. As money comes in, we can start putting them in. And? That's about it.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody have any questions for Mike on this report?
Um, what about the, were they asked you to conduct a study of alternatives for a long-term solution with the plant? Are you guys doing that?
That would be, um, something budgeted within the next three years, because that would take some money to do.
Okay.
I, I think that that's probably something that we're gonna discuss when we get to our strategic planning.
Yes.
Alright.
You know, at some point, we have to figure out what we're gonna do with it, if we're going to continue it, go someplace else, or go back to Wells.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mike and Tetra Tech rep, I think you have to look at this process with the background of Michigan right now. These inspections are going to continue for several years to be a little more rigorous. I read through your stuff and I really appreciated your response, but I could sense that parts of your response were frustrating for you to write because these are things that have been in place for many years and they know about them, but there will be no issue overlooked with respect to water for a while in Michigan. I think Tetra Tech could speak to that, uh, maybe for an hour or so. But I, I, I think you have to. I just think you have to keep this, this in perspective a little.
Uh, I fully agree with what you're saying.
Yeah.
And the person that reviewed this for the plant is new.
Oh, even worse.
Uh, and the, the people that have reviewed the plant in the past, uh, were very, very good to get along with. They understood what the plant was all about. Person that did this really did not understand the plant, did not understand the background.
Right.
And just opened it up and a lot of things in there. Uh, there's, there's things that, that Mike, uh, has saved the city a tremendous amount of money on in replacement of the sodium hypochlorite tanks and various things you've done in-house, uh, that is just amazing, uh, that, that most water plant facilities don't do on their own. And, and Mike, with the staff, has been able to do that and with the time and budgeting his own time or their time in, in terms of everything else they're doing, so.
I agree.
From that standpoint, it's going great. Uh, yeah, the letter's there, but it's, it's, it, it's insignificant in respect to the running and the operation. You're, you're producing fabulous water, meeting permits left and right.
Right.
And, and not in danger of, of any type of violation.
Right.
For what's happening there at all. But the items need to be addressed in, uh, the letter, uh, addressed professionally.
Yeah.
That's what I have to say.
And, and as I read your response, Mike, I, I, I did in my own mind fill in the blanks that I know you wanted to say.
The water, Mike, there's a lot more.
Right. I thought it was well done and I just think you have to recognize that these letters are going to seem rather picky for a while until, um...
The dust settles from Flint. I'll just say it up.
Oh. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Well, the dust may not settle. I mean, just.
Yes, it, it won't.
It's the responsive, the staff at the DEQ are, are.
They're on height, heightened alert.
They're, they're on heightened alert.
Right.
Their jobs are at jeopardy. There's, there's just, there's so much going on out there.
Yes, there is.
That everything is just, uh, they're not taking the responsibilities or the understanding that they did before. It just, they're, they're pushing.
We're in a different, different environment.
They're pushing it to the communities.
Well, plus the state's making so many mandates that communities can't afford and I know those lawsuits are all heading forward.
Well, we just, just filed last week, um, with, with respect to the water authority that I work with, challenging the fact that the state is imposing regulatory burdens without funding. Um, you know, PFAS is, well, I mean, that's, that's our flavor of the week, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay. I just want to make sure you.
Unless anybody else has any more questions for me.
No.
No.
Scotty, thanks, Mike.
Next. We're moving on to...
Celebrity.
The celebrity, yeah. Thanks, Mike.
Ah.
Much appreciated.
We got a motion, or we've got a patrol car bid in front of us.
So, on October nineteen, check that. On October eighteenth, I put out requests for sealed bids for the purchase of a patrol car. Um, I contacted Gornow Ford, Signature Ford and a local car dealer to put in, you know, bids, sealed bids for, um, for the purchase. I was notified by the gentleman at Gornow Ford that the time had elapsed for me to put in, um, the specifications to purchase the patrol car. So, when the timeframe was done, I really didn't anticipate any bids. And then, um, a couple of weeks later, Ms. Chris, we opened him up and in fact, there was one from Signature Ford, um, in the amount of, I believe, thirty thousand two thirty-eight. So, when I called him, I said, you know, Gornow Ford said you didn't have any vehicles and how do you have one? He goes, "We order extra for this reason." So, he's got one on the lot waiting for me. So, in the meantime of this timeframe, the city manager and I developed, um, a little criteria worksheet to start replacing vehicles. I believe you all have a copy of that and it's, it's pretty forthcoming and, and pretty specific on, on the criteria of when we're gonna replace the patrol car. Um, so using this sheet to, to rotate out the 2014 Chevy Tahoe, which has a hundred and seven thousand plus miles on it. Um, it's sitting out of service currently in the parking lot. Um, it needs a ton of front-end work. Estimated to be about twenty-five hundred bucks. Um, the electrical dashboard is all out of whack. Um, there was one that was involved in the collision, I think in 2015, up where the intoxicated driver had hit the side, you know, kinda sideswiped us. So, it's time to get that one out of service and purchase a new one. So, I'm before you tonight, asking, um, to purchase the, um, 2019 Ford utility vehicle in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Wish we could've got this. I had just to look at it.
Bingo.
Just so we could've went over and critiqued it with, you know, with you a little bit.
Yep.
And, uh, that's something I think we still need to do.
Yep.
But, now you're saying this vehicle's got... But now you're saying this vehicle's got, what was, what's the total in repairs you believe right now? If you add it together?
I can't, all, all I know is I contacted Phelps and said, "With everything you think is wrong with this front end, give me a figure." And he was, about twenty-five hundred. That's just for the front end.
Front end, yep. I'm talking about the other...
The windshield's cracked, um, the spotlight needs to be fixed, the trim is melted up on the driver's side, um, the dashboard is all kinda haywire, that every light is on in it. And I, I, without diving into it, I couldn't even give you a figure of what that was gonna cost to fix.
Was that the, one of the vehicles damaged in the, when we had the Tahoe fire there?
No, this is the vehicle that was, that replaced the burned one.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's what year?
Twenty-fourteen.
Um, you know, I'm always on you about these cars. Is this new one gonna have the battery pack? Are you gonna do the same thing?
Be the same thing.
No, are you gonna use the battery pack? 'Cause I got word from her that you're only doing it for one season and not another season.
I was wrong, I was wrong about that.
So, you're using it at all times?
All times, yep. The standard memos put out that if they're parking it for a lengthy period of time that at the department, vehicles to be shut off.
Is the battery, new battery pack that working fine?
It's phenomenal, yep. It keeps everything, the computer up and running for an hour. After an hour, it shuts the whole system off and makes the guys upset that they gotta log back in and go through the entire, so they'll get back in it and drive it around and shut it back off.
So, you're gonna do the same thing with this?
The exact same thing.
So, let me ask you this. I know years ago, when you guys used to have a garage, you used to do all your cleaning and maintenance and stuff. Do you guys still do all that as far as washing and cleaning these vehicles?
We, we take it down to the, to washroom, we take it down to, um, the car wash down by McDonald's. And we, we run it through there. We've got a little kitty in, in the office that guys chip into.
How, how is that new, the new Ford that you're running right now, how's that holding up and working for the guys?
Phenomenal. Got about thirteen thousand miles on it now. Guys are loving it, yep. So much, so much more, just 'cause obviously it's a newer vehicle, but they like it better than the Tahoe.
And it's definitely roomier than the Charger.
Yes.
Um, do you wrote, do you have like a schedule too on when you're using all these vehicles so that you're not, like, when the new one comes in, we're not using that constantly? 'Cause everybody wants to drive the new vehicle versus some of the other vehicles?
No, the, the guys take whatever car they wanna take. Somebody wants to jump in, uh, the two thousand and nine Tahoe as it is, which is a dog car, they can take that, they can take whatever car that they choose to.
I'm just looking at the fact that I prefer, let's use the older ones more than the newer ones if we can to try to save the wear and tear and you see what I'm saying?
I hear ya.
But yeah, I would've liked to have seen this and I, I still think we need a little bit more comprehensive package. And it's not just your vehicles, I'm talking all the city vehicles. 'Cause we even talked, um, with the fire department too, that we need a better, a better way of managing these vehicles and when they should be replaced and so on and so forth. So, you really kinda need even more criteria. I know the sheriff does it, some of the other groups do it, maybe we need to look at what they do.
I've reached out to multiple agencies and nobody has anything as comprehensive as this. I haven't seen anything. Everybody has said, "We don't do this." Nobody, nobody at the sheriff department has given me anything.
Or they don't want anybody to see it.
I did check with Tom before he retired and he said they just look at basically the amount of, you know, they have the county yard check the car. What are they gonna have to put into it in the next, and guesstimate for the next year to actually make, uh...
And maybe we need to see better, like, the maintenance records and a better list.
I had, I had the file folder of all the maintenance records for this vehicle. I grabbed the wrong folder to bring tonight. It's sitting on my desk, I apologize for that. So, it, it's, it's pretty detailed of what's in there. What's been fixed, what's been replaced.
So, how'd the one piece get burnt on the inside just?
Uh, nobody seems to know that. It, it would appear that the spotlight was on and at some point flopped over and, and melted the trim and then ultimately cracked the window. Yeah.
Weird how that happens.
Weird, yeah. So, that's gonna all need to be replaced.
We got a scratch on a fire truck that just appeared.
Yeah, it's weird, isn't it?
Yeah, nobody did it.
Mm-hmm. We have, we have a ghost over at the police department, maybe, maybe he did it, or she, who knows?
So, you wanted to torch the one vehicle?
We don't wanna get mad, and it's still got bad feelings.
I'd just like to see a better package for all our vehicles and when we do replacements, we've gotta come up with a better process.
We would be glad to have some recommendations to, to work on this form. Obviously, it's the first time that we've used it and can always be improved upon.
This is better than nothing. Uh, uh, I'm glad to see that.
Yeah, the city manager and I worked diligently over the last couple of months on this and this was our final product. But again, it can be tweaked anyway. You see fit?
I'll look around and I'll see if I, usually like the bigger departments, they'll have the procedures online where I can try to find, uh...
The, the only thing I've, I've found, 'cause I was doing research online as well, was, um, there was a company in U of M, it wasn't even a police department, and they had four criteria for their fleet replacements and it was X amount of miles and years of service and, but it was nothing specific to the police department.
I'll look around.
All right, well, can I get a motion to approve or disapprove the police car? Had to help you out there, brother.
Appreciate that, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Ford interceptor for thirty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Motion, support. We get any more questions?
Um, what about all the add-ons and the, when you have to change over? And I suppose you can't strip anything off this, it won't be compatible, so what, are you, are you gonna have another one for us for that?
Uh, for, you mean for the equipment?
Yep.
Yep, that's coming up next.
Oh, the next one, that's right.
Any other questions, Chief? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Furcannon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Better judgment, I'm gonna give it to you this time.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
All right. Next, we're moving on to waive competitive bids for your equipment. What, uh, give us a rundown on the equipment that we're gonna need, a brief summary, I know I've got it right in front of me, but I don't know what...
This, this, what I specked out was, uh, pretty much the same specifications on our current new vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one minor change was the, so the new vehicle we've got has a single prisoner cage in there and it's turning out not to be what we thought it was gonna be. So, um, we changed that out and requested a full prisoner cage in the back instead of just a single, single prisoner cage.
So, you can, you can all to with this one?
Yes. So, um, we've used Synergy now since this last vehicle, they've done a phenomenal job, great customer service, um, very easy to work with. So, I'm asking for the waiver to, to go with them.
And that's one we've used the last...
That's, it was the last one, yep.
Last one.
The last build.
And none of these are kits, like we could get on the Tahos and that, they're, they're, it's custom based.
Custom, yep.
Chief, does Synergy, they, they specialize in, in providing this type of service?
Yes. Yeah, multiple agencies utilize Synergy, um, I believe fire departments use them. Um, the last time I was down there, when I picked up my last one, I believe there were a couple DPWs, um, vehicles that were in there, that they were outfitting.
And, and, and we've used them in the past and it's been our last provider?
It was our last provider, yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for the chief? Let's start, uh, can I get a motion to waive competitive bids?
I make, I'll go ahead, Mr. I'll make a motion to waive the competitive bidding process for the equipment installation.
Any other questions on it? All in favor?
Let's do a roll call. I know it might not say that, but let's do it.
Has to be unanimous.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
I'm not spending money.
Commissioner Furcannon.
Relax.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan. Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Not, well, we're not done yet, we can still blow it up now. Um, can I get a motion to approve the bid? You're on vacation.
I know.
Can I get a motion to approve the bid?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the bid from, uh, Synergy Products for nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents for equipment and installation, um, of the, uh, to, uh, outfit our new patrol car.
Support.
Motion, support. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Commissioner Furcannon.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Do you want me to talk about the body cameras real quick?
Yeah, we've got the car done, right?
Car's done, yeah. The, the body cams, I wanna withdraw that. Um, we had a, a meeting yesterday morning, um, several of the chiefs, and, um, we're gonna slow down a little bit, do some research on a couple of other companies before we present anything. So, it's gonna have to be unanimous with the chiefs for the body cameras, because it's gonna be a homeland security grant and he wants it to be every agency get the same body camera. So, we're gonna get, um, two other companies to come in and give us presentations and we're gonna choose from there. Yes, Lisa.
Um, now, I remember a long time ago, we talked about that you had already, is this the same grant that we talked about a long time ago that you got for the body cameras?
Same grant. So, the, so, long story with this one, um, the grant came in, we purchased, um, four or five L3 body cameras. Well, L3 at the same time was pushing out a brand-new one and said, "Just keep your old ones in the box. When the new ones are pushed out, we'll, we'll take the old ones and give you the brand-new ones, no cost." So, they sat stagnant for, I don't know, four or five months and then L3 pushed out their new system. And if you look in New York, when they pushed them out, they were actually catching officers on fire. So, they said, "Well, we're not gonna send out anybody, the new stuff." So, the administrator of our grant, I believe is now Mike Coach, the Clay Township Chief, he contacted L3 and we're in the process of getting a refund, which was in the amount of thirty-three hundred dollars. So, I have that, those monies to put towards this project.
Um, what about a procedure for using them? Are we...
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna do a countywide, um, policies and procedures so everybody, mirrored from everybody.
Okay.
So...
All right.
So, I don't need to ask for anything on that one.
There we go. We like that. We're good.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to total disbursements, including payroll, for one hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty-three cents.
I make a motion to approve the total disbursements, including payroll, for a hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and forty-three cents.
Support.
Questions and concerns on, Lisa?
Um, just a comment, I see a lot of repairs on furnaces and systems. Do we ever talk to any of these companies? I know I have a plan so that I get a better discount and break on parts and labor if my furnace goes. Do you guys ever look into any type of service contract?
Not a service plan, but we do have, um, maintenance in place, so regular maintenance schedule for them to come out.
Okay, you might, you wanna ask him if they give you any kinda...
Pricing for, like, an annual plan for...
Especially with the amount that we have. That's it.
Any other questions or concerns on disbursements? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Furcannon.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to a motion to receive and file preliminary financial reports.
I make a motion to receive and file the preliminary financial statements, November twenty-eighteen, as submitted.
Support.
Motion, support. Any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, carried. City manager's report.
Since my last report, I attended the SEMCOG water monitoring wrap-up meeting, the Scotts meeting, and, uh, one more MML seminar on the recreational marijuana. Did provide everyone with white pages, so you can enjoy that for reading until our next meeting, January seventeenth. I anticipate that either that meeting or the first meeting in February, we will probably have recreational marijuana back on the agenda for further discussion and, uh, see if there's any developments at that point. Um, I would like to congratulate Nikki Leonard of Marine City on graduating from the Licensed Practical Nurse Program at St. Clair County Community College. She was the second graduate of the community foundation's, um, Complete Your Degree Program. So, congratulations to her for that. If you have not already seen or noticed, I did put out notice that we are suspending the enforcement of the winter parking permits until January second. Uh, there doesn't appear to be any big snow events in the next, uh, ten days and that gives people an opportunity to have guests and company that can park on the street during the holiday season. Staffing's gonna be light over the holidays. We will be open the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and then, uh, we'll be back on January second. Um, I would just like to say regarding the snow parking permits, I, I know the board is very, very thoughtful and receptive to changes for ordinance. We have good, open, respectful conversation, you know, either people coming in my office and, and asking questions and then, you know, investigating, seeing if there are potentials for changes, because oftentimes, we do find that there are shortcomings in ordinances that we have recently changed or ones that are in need of changing. Come the new year, we will have another bundle of ordinances that will be before you that has already been through planning commission. Uh, we were just waiting for a full complement of the board before we went back to that for business. That's all I have, and I guess happy holidays, everyone.
Anyone have any questions for the city manager? Okay, Cheryl, would you like to start us out on, uh, commissioner privilege?
Um, I really don't have anything, honestly, right now. Just wanna say, you know, happy holidays to everybody, merry Christmas, and prosperous and healthy new year.
Mr. Clausen.
Yeah, that's what I have on, especially saying, they can have a good holiday, play it safe, be careful and enjoy it. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna, um, congratulate Paul Merchant on, uh, on his, uh, appointment to the city commission, um, welcome. And I also wanna thank, um, the other applicants for, who applied for the city commission seat and for all the board vacancies. It's a, it's a commitment and we all know it's a commitment and we thank you for being willing to take, uh, take on the time to do that. So, and with that, I just wanna say, uh, happy holidays, merry Christmas, happy new year, enjoy and be safe.
Lisa.
Um, I wanna thank everybody. We had the Old Newsboys paper drive sale a weekend or two ago, you saw us all standing out there. It was a nice cold weekend. But we all survived it and everybody was very, very generous, so we did very well. And, um, I wanna appreciate everybody who didn't run us down and we only lost one of